Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. And shall we do the roll call now?
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President Naidoo.
President Naidoo is absent after a long campaign season, so I'm filling in for him. Okay. Councilman-elect Greg Vartan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicaties@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length, unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of October, sorry, what was the?
Sixteenth.
October 16th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to reports. Madam Mayor, please.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gould. Okay, good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to announce that the City, on Thursday, November 1st, and the City and the Summit Recycling Advisory Committee launched a Skip the Straw Initiative that is focused on reducing the use of plastic straws. Businesses are being asked to serve straws by request only or switch to an alternative to plastic straws. Residents will be encouraged to order drinks without a straw or use a reusable straw. And this is all voluntary on the part of the businesses. We have also put a soft plastics recycling bin at the transfer station to collect Ziploc and grocery bags. A full list of what is recyclable or not is listed on a sign next to the bin. Used tennis balls are also being recycled at Memorial Field, Tatlock Field, and at the Summit Tennis Club. I thank the Recycling Advisory Committee, the Environmental Commission, and Green Summit, and all the volunteers who are working to reduce plastic consumption and increase recycling rates. Your efforts are making a positive impact on the environmental health of our community. I see Karen Reihaffer is here, so thank you, Karen. Okay. Daily visitor parking permits. As the holiday season approaches, I would like to mention an opportunity for businesses to purchase prepaid daily parking permits for customers and clients. The cost is $6 for one permit, where you can buy 10 for $50. Please contact the Parking Services Agency and for available parking locations. My next meet the mayor is scheduled for Saturday, November 17th, and I'll be at the Vito Gallo Senior Center, 12 Chestnut, from 1:00 to 2:30. Members of the community are invited to stop by and say hello or share any thoughts and concerns. If you cannot join me on November 17th, my office hours are Wednesdays from 9:00 to 11:00 and 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and on Thursdays from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Next week, I will be in Atlantic City with the council members at the League of Municipalities Meeting Conference, so I won't be there. But I'm also available by email to set up an appointment at any time. And then, last but not least, I want to congratulate all of the candidates that participated in this last election. I look forward to welcoming Greg Vartan to Common Council in January, and I am happy to have Councilwoman Naidoo seated next to me again next year. It's an exciting time, as the City is pursuing some important initiatives, including the Broad Street West redevelopment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, on to City Administrator Michael Rogers.
Thank you, Council President Protam. Good evening, everyone. Union County has provided a revised schedule for the milling of River Road. Work will now take place on Thursday, November 8th, Friday, November 9th, and Monday, November 12th, between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Roadwork will begin on the section of River Road closest to Route 24 and proceed toward Passaic Avenue and the Chatham border. During the milling operations, detours are possible. Emergency vehicles will be provided access at all times, of course, and please plan an alternate route. All veterans are invited to play a free round of golf at the Summit Municipal Golf Course on Saturday, November 10th, Sunday, November 11th, and Monday, November 12th. In addition to the free round of golf, all veterans will receive a complimentary gift as an expression of our gratitude for your dedicated service. The Department of Community Programs is proud to announce that it is the recipient of two awards from the World Water Park Association. The Summit Family Aquatic Center received a Wave Review Award from the World Water Park Association for a poster for McMuny's Doggy Dip designed by our own Jamie Calucci. This is an international award for aquatic facilities with under 100,000 guest members. Judith Joseph was also honored by the World Water Park Association with the Kelly Ogle Safety Award for her leadership and advocacy for aquatic safety, and it's a pretty big award, from what we heard. So we're really pleased and well-deserved. In her 30-plus-year career, Judith has now won every award given by the World Water Park Association.
That's embarrassing.[455.12][455.12](Laughter)
Congratulations to you both, you and Jamie and the entire department.
I gotta start over now?
Yeah, no, some other career. Curbside leaf collection is ongoing through December 7th or the first major snowfall. Please place leaves curbside in biodegradable brown paper bags. Property owners should not rake or blow leaves into piles in the street. Twigs, branches, and other yard debris should be placed in leaf bags. Another city employee accolade, or city construction official Gary Lewis, was named an honorary member of the International Code Council for his dedicated service to municipal government. Gary is nationally-known and highly-respected co-professional who is often saw for his expertise. Congratulations, Gary. And lastly, on December, I'm sorry, on Thursday, October 25th of this year, members of the Summit Fire Department were honored by the Burn Center at St. Barnabas Medical Center with a Medal of Valor for rescue efforts at the December 31st, 2017 fire on Summit Avenue. On arrival at the scene, fire department personnel were met with heavy fire conditions throughout the building and made multiple rescues of occupants trapped on the second and third floors. Although 12 families lost homes that night, no life-threatening injuries were sustained by either the occupants or firefighters during the incident. Congratulations to firefighters Brian Tavas, Christopher Esposito, Dwight Nichols, Gabrielle Ionella, Ionella, Lieutenant James Pignotello, and Battalion Chief Henry Clint Evers. Our sincerest gratitude to you all for the extraordinary service you demonstrated that day. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President Protam.
Thank you, City Administrator Rogers, and congratulations to Department of Community Programs and the finest police fire department in the state. Okay, so for the Council President's statement, I want to talk a bit about voting. So we had about 113 million people participate in the 2018 midterms across the country, first time in history that we had over 100 million voters, with 49% of eligible voters participating, which in comparison to four years previously in the previous midterm was very low, at only 36%. So that was a huge, huge improvement, and that is wonderful. But meanwhile, in Summit, we have about 14,200 eligible voters, and we had 9,600 of our voters turn out, which is almost 67%. So we really are an exceptional place, and we are just destroying the national average. So phenomenal civic engagement. So partly, that's due to our extraordinary citizens, and partly, I also think it's due to our extraordinary voting process. So, you know, I work in the city, so I voted at 6:00 a.m. I went into the city after that, and I kept seeing long lines at the polling stations, people waiting in the rain for two or three hours to vote, stuff not working, names not there, and it was basically a mess, so much so that some of the New York City council members are calling for the Voting Commission to be fired. Ours, meanwhile, was smooth as silk here. So thanks to Joanne Rajapi, the Union County Clerk, thanks to Terry Tauber and Nick Coron, the master poll workers, and Nicole Dorado, who's the administrator at the UC Board of Elections and her staff, and of course, thanks to our fantastic city clerk, Rosemary Lickaties, and Nicole Sarnau, our deputy city clerk. Thank you.[679.43][679.43](Applause) And our tremendous poll workers at each of our polling places. So phenomenal, really phenomenal, and a night and day 20 miles apart for us to look at. Finally, I'd like to mention, it's not about Summit, really, but we had a record number of women who won up and down the ballot in both parties, Republican and Democratic, for governors, and we have 118 women at least heading to Washington as part of the 116th U.S. Congress. So that's really a phenomenal achievement, and I'm so thrilled.
And a lot of veterans as well.
Yes. Yes. My only complaint is that they're setting the bar so high, you know? You've got to be a helicopter pilot, mother of four, Rhodes Scholar in order to run these days. None of us, well, not me, I have no chance.
Excuse me, Council President, Council President Naidoo asked me to read
Yes, of course.
...a statement on his behalf, if I may.
Please do.
Okay. So, Council President Naidoo asked me to read the following. "I wish I could be there with you tonight, however, I am celebrating my 20th wedding anniversary with my family. Talking about family, I would like to congratulate and welcome Greg Vartan to our council family. I would like to thank the people of Summit for their support of me, and I would also like to acknowledge and thank my friend John Dougherty, who ran an honorable race. He has served this community in many ways for which we are better. I wish him, Patty, and his family well. Thank you."
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and welcome, Greg. And, okay, on to presentations. So this evening, we have a very fine presentation from the Library Board of Trustees with Christina Amundson and, right?
Susan Perma.
And Susan, there you go, Susan.
Susan Perma hosts our director.
Susan Perma hosts, the Director of Library. Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to this.
I have to lower the microphone significantly if you're ever going to hear me. Okay, testing, one, two, three? Awesome. Mayor Rades, esteemed council members, I'm Christina Amundson, current president of the Board of Trustees of the Summit Free Public Library. With me is Susan Perma, who's the library's director. I am very grateful for this opportunity to represent our board and share with you why we're so committed to making a difference in Summit by serving on this board. As you know, the Summit Free Public Library is a municipal library, and under the law, its board is independent and subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. Our board consists of seven members, the mayor or her representative currently, Celia Colbert, the superintendent of schools or his representative currently, Carol Stubek, who is the school media specialist at Lincoln Hubbard, and five residents-at-large, currently Sandy Bloom, Susan Callahan, Jim Fleishman, Norma Schroeder, and myself. You can see from the picture that was taken in January, we're all bundled up against the weather, but all happy to be there. Together, we set the direction and policy for the Summit Free Public Library, and we are responsible for being good stewards of its budget. The Summit Free Public Library is truly a community gem. Its library card opens up a world, access to many free materials, books, yes, but also movies, including foreign films, musical, music streaming, digital magazines, ebooks, and audiobooks, Rosetta Stone and other language learning kits, P.S., we, and not to be forgotten, Xbox games, college courses, and museum passes to places as varied as the grounds for sculpture, Battleship New Jersey, the Intrepid Museum, the Guggenheim Museum in the city, and the Brooklyn Botanical Garden. Who knew from Summit, right? As our mission and vision illustrate, the Summit Free Public Library is more than just a traditional library, though we are very proud of this traditional role, hosting adults, children, and teens in book clubs, author presentations, weekly storytime, and our popular CATS program spelled with two Ts. As you can see from the next slide, the Summit Free Public Library is a vital community center, a place for all to exchange ideas and grow. You have a copy of this slide with your materials, I believe, and it shows all the different things that the library did in fiscal 2017. While you look at the handout describing the library's impact on our community during 2017, I would like to highlight recent improvements to the library's physical plant that we made to continue to improve its ability to serve Summit. We revisioned the children's department to make it more inviting and child-friendly. We created a more ergonomic circulation and reference desks to make them more accessible, see how there's a lower part, and easy to use. We have dedicated teen space that's very attractive. We have a state-of-the-art meeting room to host large events, and we are very proud of our brand-new electronic sign to alert our community about upcoming programs or community emergencies. So think about that. Who exactly uses the Summit Free Public Library? As you can see from the slide, we are a diverse group from all walks of life and with different needs. Some of our users are homebound, in which case, we bring the library to them with delivery and electronic materials. By a show of hands, how many of you have downloaded materials from the library? Nice. Have you ever printed from home to pick up at the library? That's available, too. I want to focus your attention to that tiny little box on the right. If you take a straight average of the 2017 number, you'll see that an average of 17,126 users visited the library each month. As you can see from the October number, we're well on track to meet or exceed this. Library use in Summit remains strong. Going back to the handout, I want to share a bit more detail in the distribution of materials described, distinguishing between physical items like print, audiobooks, and DVDs, and items that are streamable, that we call electronic. If you go to this pie chart, you can see a different slice of looking at the same numbers, further breaking down the details. You may not be able to read it, but you would see that video games are included in the video category, for instance. Of course, research continues to be a focus, provided sometimes with a sense of humor, like when the storm troopers visited the library on Star Wars Day, which is May 4th, providing answers with a heartfelt, "May the fourth be with you." But seriously, the library is a place to learn, to play, and to work. Whether you use your own devices with 90,714 wireless sessions hosted in 2017, or use the public computers at the library, 17,428 separate sessions, borrow the iGuy, which is the little red handheld there, which is preprogrammed with ebooks for children, or enjoy one of the many community programs that the library offers. In 2017, there were 991 programs offered by the library. The stats are impressive enough, with an average of 2.7 programs per day. But we wanted to share some pictures, too, so that you could appreciate the depth that the library brings to the people of Summit. All sorts of cultural events, book clubs, gaming, weekly movies, and storytime with the inimitable Mrs. Wielis, who has many storytime DVDs to her credit. The library truly is a community gathering place that is available to all. In fact, the Summit Free Public Library offers traditional library services and so much more. This slide is tiny, but we promise we'll send it to you, and it offers different types of services by category, and one that I wanted to highlight. Did you know that the library has a free notary service during business hours? Perfect.
Sorry, what was that?
The library offers a free notary service during business hours, among other great things. You can also, you know, scan for free, you can get free internet service there. And let me tell you, my daughter was working on her law school, law review write-in competition, and we had a power outage in the summertime when she was doing it, and she drove to the library and kept on going and handed it in, no problems. So it's really handy. Community partnerships are important for us, too. The library routinely partners with these community organizations to enhance their impact and promote our common goals in the Summit community. It's an impressive collection. Working with the Rutgers Cooperative Extension and Summit's own Environmental Commission, the library proudly showcases rain gardens, complete with teaching tools that identify the plants and their functions. Recently, the library participated in a health fair with Overlook Medical Center and hosted two nonpartisan voter registration drives with the League of Women Voters. Undoubtedly, we contributed to that amazing turnout. All of these activities further our mission to inform, enrich, and inspire the Summit community. Our long-term plans include many additional ways to serve Summit, and we're very excited about purchasing a generator to help the library become a more useful warming and charging station. The upcoming Broad Street redevelopment project provides an opportunity for the library to continue to play a pivotal role in serving the community and may even provide the ability to enhance the sustainability of the library. I want to close with a quick review of our history through our buildings. After many years of renting space, the first permanent library building, now known as the Summit Playhouse. A few years pass, and the library is then housed at the beautiful Carnegie Building, built with a grant from the Carnegie Foundation. This housed the library in the early part of the 20th century. The mid-century modern building that just popped up housed the library, and it was the first library building that many of us encountered when we moved to Summit. And finally, the graceful current library building that we all know and love. We truly appreciate that you made good choices in appointing committed residents to serve on the library board, volunteers who take seriously their responsibilities to attend meetings, to pursue required training so we can continue to make good, independent choices as our community changes, and of course, to advocate for the library. Finally, we are very grateful for your support in helping make our future initiatives a reality through budgetary allocations, and for maintaining the role of the library as a vibrant community resource for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1352.11][1352.11](Applause) Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Does any council members have any questions? Yes, Councilwoman.
I don't have any questions. Having, this board is actually very near and dear to my heart, and having worked and served as a board member before coming on council and then serving as liaison, I just cannot highlight enough the amazing achievements that this board has done, and the changes that Susan, actually being a part of the committee to hire Susan, I proudly say, has done amazing things with the library, and knowing budgetary restraints, not getting funding from the state and making changes necessary to the library and effectively making that happen, and with the constraints that you've had, yet getting the children's room, the young adult room, all that you have done in making that truly, when you say a pivotal role in the community, that building, your facility, and everybody involved in that library board are remarkable, dedicated, wonderful citizens of Summit, and I just know that I have loved being a part of this board and working with all of you and seeing what the library has done. So, you know, I hope, I'll see you when I come reading, when I have free time. But thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ogden. I also, Councilwoman Ogden, sorry. I also wanted to highlight, most of our board is here tonight. This is the dedication that they show every single month when they come to our meetings and in between, because we meet as a personnel committee, as a finance committee, as a Buildings and Grounds Committee. We're a very busy board, and these people are very dedicated and serve our city very well. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you for your, yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Christina, don't leave so quick. Councilman Turner.
Sorry, sorry. I didn't see them.
No, I also just wanted to compliment the work that all of you do as volunteers for the City of Summit. I mean, one, all these statistics just pop out, they're incredible. But one I think is amazing, we have about 22,000 people who live in Summit, and you guys have given out 19,500 library cards. I mean, that just tells you, not only are, you know, a couple of those 22,000 are probably too young to read yet, but it just tells you how, what a center that is. It's not just for residents, but people who work here. You know, that's just an amazing number that so many people in our community, certainly relative to our population, take advantage of the library. It's just incredible. One question I had, I was reading, you know, you mentioned a generator for, as a community warming, which I think is a great idea, because with all the amenities that the library has to offer, what a fantastic place to go when unfortunately, sometimes, the power goes out in our community. But I've been reading about, like, new technology around, like battery technology, for instance, and I just wondering, has the library looked into that relative to the gas generators? And the thing I would specifically mention, I know, like Tesla, for instance, is now selling these batteries that you hang in your basement, and it's, and when the power goes off, the battery just runs your facility.
Yeah, I'm waiting to buy one of those for my home, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and so it's green, it's a really cool technology that, my understanding is, it's starting to become commercially viable relative to gas generators.
Well, we just started looking at all the different alternatives, and we're certainly going to consider that one, because, to be honest with you, I personally believe, as somebody who's worked on the Shetree Advisory Committee with Paul and been involved as a friend of the Environmental Commission and attending so many meetings over the years, I personally think generators are smelling and noisy. So, you know, to make a long story short, we will look at any sustainable alternative, and batteries, you know, are an amazing way to go if they work the way they are trying to work.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to add my thanks. I know how hard you all work, and I love the library. I don't get there as much as I would like, unfortunately, but I do have, you know, access to the ebook, so it's awesome, and I really thank you very much, and thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Just thank you for your dedication and for creating such a wonderful piece of Summit. Now, we are going to move on to public comments. We move this section up in case there's anybody that's got something they want to talk about. So is there anyone here who wants to make a comment about anything that's not on tonight's Seeing none, last chance, we'll get back to our agenda then. And we're going to go out of order with our agenda, because we've got a hot topic, a discussion, action, or referral, General Services. This is ID number 6029, which is actually towards the bottom of the agenda, if you're looking, but we're going to bring it up so that we can talk about it now. And Councilwoman Ogden, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thanks. Hope you give me one hot second to get this.
Oh, sure.
You threw me off.
Sure. In the meantime, I'd like to talk about my lost library card and what I should do about it. Serious question. I cannot find my library card, and
Come on in, we'll get you.
Okay.
We'll bring you on that dial.
Thank you. My children are there all the time, two or three times a week, but I have been ashamed to say that I can't find my library card. Sorry to spring that on you, Councilwoman Ogden.
That's all right. Well, as you said, this is a discussion, action, and referral item, which, as we know, SDI has sent us a letter requesting free holiday parking this season, and I, so it'll be up for discussion, but I just want to start off by saying that I'm not in favor of that, and my reasons are that we've put in the kiosks, we have done everything possible to try to create turnover, and it seems to me, at this holiday season, what you want to create more than anything else is turnover, so that more shoppers are able to come in and use our wonderful, go to our wonderful, use the downtown. And so I will have resolutions coming forward in other ways that I would like to address holiday parking, but that's, General Services is not necessarily, or not, excuse me, not necessarily, not in support of this request for free holiday parking.
Thank you for that. Excellent analysis. Any other, Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President Protam.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I am in agreement with Mary Ogden. We have discussed this at length in the General Services, and we have discussed other ways of providing incentives for shoppers to come downtown. One of the things is that it's very expensive to, to give the free parking during the holidays, and we really do want to encourage people to use the downtown, use the spaces, and giving the free spaces all day seems to limit that. So we, we do want to support the downtown businesses. We have some plans to incentivize people to park downtown, which we'll be presenting, but giving the free parking throughout the entire holiday season seems to be counterproductive to having more people come to the downtown and find places to park, so we are not in favor of going forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other council, yes, Councilman McTernan.
Thank you, Council President Protem. You know, this has come up every year since, I think, I've been on council, and, uh, if you remember, I think it was two years ago, or maybe it was last year, we, we passed an ordinance that we were going to grant the Thanksgiving weekend as free parking. It used to be that we would vote on that every year, and SDI would come up and they would say what a great thing it is, and it's, you know, Black Friday, then Small Business Saturday, it was perfect for our downtown, and, and the council said, okay, makes sense, let's do this to support our businesses. But as Councilwoman Ogden and Councilwoman Little mentioned, there are costs associated with that, you know, particularly enforcement, having to make sure people move, it's, it's difficult in a lot of ways to give a ticket to someone who's supposed to be parking there for free that has stayed an hour and 45 minutes at a 90-minute meter when it's supposed to be free, but you're, you need to be able to enforce things. So it creates a lot of, I guess, branding issues is the way I would think about it, where you're, you're trying to be fair to people and you want to have them park there, but to enforce movement, you have to ticket as well. So it's, it's not the best system, I think. But one thing that I mentioned last year when this came up was that there is a monetary cost to the city. It's, it's about, as Rita put together in here, it's about $50,000 in lost revenue for the city. And we don't run parking as a revenue source, we manage it as an asset for the city to kind of maximize utility for our shoppers and our residents, as well as promote our businesses. So it's a, it's a fine line, and we use fees in order to allocate a scarce resource, which is a parking space. So to do this, you have to have a reason. Like, is there an economic reason that SDI asked for this? They claim it's important for their businesses, but last year I made a very strong point that if they want to do this, they should put some skin in the game. A nominal amount of money to say, to help offset the city's cost, to make it seem like it's worth it. If they're not willing to pony up any amount of anything, and I think last year we talked about $3,000, a nominal amount, what's the value? If they're not willing to do that, then it, then to me, it's telling you that there is no value to this. And why is the city going through all this to promote this when the businesses themselves don't find any value in it? Even less than 10% of the actual cost and revenue for the city. It makes no sense. So I, I would love to see SDI come back with some sort of proposal around that at a minimum in order to possibly support this. You know, I, I, my understanding was there might have been some money allocated to their budget this year for that, but it's not mentioned in the, the letter that they've written. So I'm, I'm open to have this discussion, but again, I, I just think it's important that SDI shows that they, how much, they have to care a little bit about this in, in order to have, as I said, some skin in the game.
Thank you, Councilman McTernan, and Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman Fox.
I had a question about this memo that, that Rita McNanny had prepared. It says in here that in 2017, council approved free parking for December 15th to 22nd of 2018. Is that an error, or is that, has that actually been approved?
No.
No.
So what, what is your, so the General Services Committee is recommending that we not have free parking at all, or some subset?
Well, no, I'm going to come up with two resolutions in a minute. Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So Councilwoman Ogden, I believe you have resolutions you want to bring from the floor.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, how do, she just does that now?
Yes, she can make a motion to have a resolution considered from the floor, she'll need a second and a vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Council President Protem. This first resolution that I would like to bring forward is a resolution to hand out courtesy cards to the shoppers in Summit during the holiday season when they have gone over their time limit instead of tickets. We feel it is the holiday season, we used to do this in the downtown, and it's a way to say, you know, you've gone over, friendly reminder, happy holidays, not getting a ticket this time, do it again, you will, but, um, you know, courtesy card to, to those that are going over time as opposed to giving tickets during the holiday season.
Okay. Go ahead, your second. Second from Councilwoman Little. And do we need to write that up, or can we just?
Well, uh, what I would recommend is that you, as with any other resolution, you offer anybody from the public to comment and then come back to council.
Okay.
Council comment.
Wonderful. Let's go with public comments first. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on Councilwoman Ogden's resolution from the floor? Seeing none, any council members, yes?
I, I just have a question. So this is a, this is like, we're, we're granting our parking authority kind of to give people like a, a free pass thing. So we're saying for some period in the holidays, that rather than ticketing someone at the 90-minute kiosks, I won't call them meters anymore, they're the kiosks, that they'll get one of these things. And how are we going, what if someone's a multiple abuser, how does that work?
They get a ticket. The next time, it'll come up on license plate recognition, and Rita says they monitor that, and if it comes up again, then they absolutely get a ticket.
Okay.
It's a one-shot deal. It's a friendly reminder, a happy holiday card that just says, you know, you went over, and we're not ticketing you this time, but if it is a repeat offender, they will get a ticket.
Okay. So I guess one of my questions would be is, it's hard for me to decide to vote on this if I don't know what other holiday parking resolutions that are going to be out there.
Well, see, can I bundle them? I can't do that. I can bundle them.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll just make them separate resolutions, but you can bundle.
Oh, all right.
Good. So let's hear the Councilwoman Ogden, let's proceed with the second.
Okay. Resolution number two, with your support, is to have two Saturdays in December for the 90-minute-only kiosk for free holiday parking. And that would be Saturday the 15th and Saturday the 22nd. So those two Saturdays, as long as, as well as the day after Thanksgiving, would be two free holiday parking days. So I move that resolution to have two Saturday, December 15th and 22nd, as two free holiday parking days only.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Little. Any comments from? What's that?
His puzzler is puzzling.
Any comments from the public about these two bundled resolutions from the floor? Seeing, seeing none, we'll go with comments from Council, Councilwoman, actually, Councilwoman Bowman, I believe, had his hand up first.
Okay.
This is just for the kiosk on the street. Are we doing anything for, I mean, people to be parking in the parking, you know, the deforced lots that go over five hours? Are we doing anything to encourage them to, or to address that?
This is only the 90-minute kiosks. They'll still, the, the deforest will still get tickets.
If they go over five hours, or?
Well, they'll just pay $50.
They'll have to pay $60.
Right. And the deforest lots will still have the first hour of parking free.
Right.
Okay, Councilwoman Little?
I just wanted to make one other point. This is, this is the proposal we came up with in General Services after a lot of discussion in response to this, is having two free parking days and then doing these courtesy cards. The other point I, I wanted to make earlier, but I forgot to mention, was that in their request from SDI, they said that traditionally Summit has granted free parking at the meters during the holiday season, but when we spoke to Rita, actually, last year was the first year that we had done the free parking at the meters, and in previous years, we had done these courtesy cards. So we felt that this was a good compromise to do the courtesy cards during the holiday season as a friendly reminder, and with the license recognition software, we do have the ability to see that people only get one of these courtesy cards and get a ticket for repeat offenses, and then to give them the two free shopping days for the two weekends leading up to the holidays, so they could advertise free shopping and use that as an incentive for people to come to town. And again, I want to say that this isn't a measure that we're doing because it would cost the city too much money, or even though it is significantly expensive, but really to help the downtown, we've put the kiosks in place to encourage turnover, to encourage more people to be able to park in the downtown, to encourage more people to be able to use the downtown, and we don't want to go back on that during the holiday season when it's crucial for people to be able to get in and out of town easily.
Yeah, Councilwoman Fox.
I'm just wondering if we have any information about how last year, when we did the free parking, since we did do it, do we have any data on, on the number of people that used it? Did it increase the turnover? Did it increase the usage of, of the downtown businesses? So that's one question I had. And, you know, we're, we're talking about some smaller subset of the project this year, but I'm just wondering if, if we have any information about what the result was from last year. And then the second thing is, what would be the cost of doing this? I've seen breakouts of all the different pieces, but for those two Saturdays, has anyone looked at what those costs would be? And is SDI going to contribute something to that?
Well, as far as SDI, through you...
Please, Councilwoman Ogden.
SDI has not made any offer. The only thing that I've gotten is the same as you've gotten in their request, and they have made no offer to contribute anything, even though we did speak about that last year. And Rita, unfortunately, isn't here tonight, so the exact cost of the two Saturdays, I don't, I'm not, I don't know. I don't know exactly what that cost would be. But in past year, they wanted from December 9th all the way to the 25th, so this is just considerably less.
I think we could estimate, it looks like last year was about $81,000 cost for 13 days. Right? So I believe you could estimate that it's about, you know?
$19,500.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, there's the estimate, $19,500 roughly would be the cost, the, but it's not a cost, it's lost revenue.
Right, it's lost revenue, but I'm just wondering why we're doing this now, you know, from the floor like this, instead of discussing it and, you know, and, and having the opportunity to read and understand all of this?
Understood. I, I would think that the reason to do it from the floor is that it's, that our next council meeting is November...
19th.
19th?
Yes.
Which we want to make sure that they have enough time to advertise for it. I know that was a big discussion point last year.
Yeah, that was the only reason to come from the floor to, sorry, again, through the president.
Please, Councilwoman Ogden.
That was the only reason to come tonight, because they need to get the advertising out and let the shoppers know if council moves forward with it, so that they could get on board with that, but I, you know, if we move it to the next council meeting. But we just wanted, as General Services, to be very clear that we were not in support of this, and bringing it as DAR, we have to have it for discussion, so.
Right, but it was important enough to bring up. Councilman McTernan.
Yeah, I think maybe Councilwoman Ogden has mentioned it, but I, I kind of, I agree with what Councilwoman Fox is saying. One about timing, it just seems like we haven't had a real chance to kind of consider this. Well, we could, obviously, but I think more importantly, has General Services talked to SDI at all about these proposals? Like, do we, we have any input at all from the businesses on what they think of this?
Councilwoman Ogden.
We have not.
Yeah, so, so I, I think, you know, we have a, we have a, an organization that speaks for the businesses in the downtown. I know that they have, as a DAR, they've, they've come with something that, as I mentioned, I find is lacking in some things that they should be putting forward. That being said, though, I, I think for us to kind of come up with some holiday parking ideas without getting input from them, you know, they, they exist for that, and, and I get there's a timing issue, but we have, you know, if we, if, if we can get this over the next two weeks, it's the end of November, we already have Thanksgiving covered, I mean, how are they advertising this? Mostly probably through social media, et cetera. They can get that up and running pretty quickly, I would think. I, I just would prefer to have a, a resolution around this that has buy-in from our business community versus us just saying, this is what we think.
Yes, Councilwoman Ogden.
Thank you, Council President. We had on the agenda for the next meeting, these two resolutions. They were coming at the next meeting, but because of the DAR and because of the fact that that was going in this, tonight's agenda, we wanted to move it forward so that we could make this decision, because we got their DAR so late. So that was what, because we, we had these two resolutions ready to go for our next council meeting, so they can still go there, but we wanted to enlighten the DAR in this discussion tonight, put out what we were planning to do prior to the, because they hadn't come to us. So this is what we wanted to do in General Services for the holiday season.
Thank you.
So this is prior to SDI, these two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think, yes, Mayor Rades.
I think it makes some sense to get, have a discussion with SDI, but this, they're not going to want it, they're, they're not going to want what we're offering, is my suspicion. They want free parking for the two, the 12 days. But, but that said, it's always a good thing to try to discuss it with them. So if you all want to put it on another, you know, on the next, on the 19th, it, it still gives them time. But I would caution that we don't, we, we make our decision based upon what we think is best for the city with their input.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rades. I think in light of the fact that we don't have Rita or a representative from SDI here, although I think that both of those resolutions are really smart and, uh, you know, something that I can support, I think we should put this on the agenda, at the top of the agenda for the next meeting, although I am certainly glad that we had this discussion. Is there anything we have to do other than that, Madam Clerk, to put it on the next?
You can table both discussions and bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, table it, and, and thank you so much for the excellent points. And who, we, will you, who, who, is one of us going to speak with SDI to have them come to the next meeting, or is that something that?
Yeah, we can on General Services, they can go through us.
That, that would be wonderful. Thank you. And thank you to the Library Board of Trustees for sticking it out with us. Okay, so back to the agenda. Give me, bear with me for one moment here. Aha. So now, we're going to go back to the regular agenda in order, and we have an ordinance for hearing from the Law Committee. Councilman McTernan.
President Protem, may I read the title of the ordinance?
Oh, please do, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Meetings of the Common Council, Section 2-2.1, Rules of the Common Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Councilman McTernan.
Thank you, Council President Protem. All right, as read this ordinance for introduction, would restructure the six committees that comprise the council oversight structure for the operation of the municipality. Traditionally, each common council member, with the exception of the council president, who's busy enough, chairs one of the committees and is joined by at least one additional common council member. And I think that's one reason why the structure for the oversight has always been six committees, because we have seven council people, one of whom is the council president. The purpose of this ordinance is to align the committee structure to how the city has come to operate. So specifically, we're going to change the Committee on Buildings and Grounds, will now become the Committee, the Committee on Community Programs and Parking Services. The Committee on Finance and Personnel will now be the Committee of Finance. The Committee of, on Law will now end up becoming the Committee on Law and Labor. The Committee on General Services, which interestingly enough, was never called that in our ordinance, it was called the Committee on Public...
in our ordinance, it was called the Committee on Public Welfare. We're changing that, it's going to now be the Committee on Administrative Policies and Community Relations. And then finally, our Committee on Public Works will become the Committee on Capital Projects and Community Services. So as I mentioned, the, the idea is to see how our city has actually started to function in reality and have our oversight council committees change their designations so they align much more closely with how the city is actually operating for efficiency, not just for council, but more importantly, for our hardworking people in the, in the city staff. So our, the Capital Projects and Community Service Committee will have responsibility for controlling all capital projects and capital expenses for parking, the DCP and DCS, and that includes the sewer, the fire, and the police. And, but it will be only for construction and renovation projects there. They'll also have oversight over the implementation of affordable housing requirement trusts and for DCS, operating and non-capital projects and expenses. Our new Safety and Health Committee, did I not mention that one? Yeah, so Safety Committee will now become the Safety and Health Committee as well, and that's going to have oversight for the police, fire, and now the Board of Health as well, except for capital projects for those areas. The Finance Committee will pretty much do what they are doing now, which is a lot. They'll be responsible for our operating and capital budgets, bonding, professional agreements, tax assessment and appeals, tax collections, and insurance-related matters. Importantly, they will not, now not deal with personnel issues, except as, as part of the overall budgeting process. Law and Labor will have oversight for city lawsuits, disciplinary matters affecting personnel and personnel issues, as well as labor contract negotiations. Our new Community Programs and Parking Services Committee will, as it says, will have oversight of DCP and parking, both the operating and the non-capital projects and expense part of that. And then finally, the Administrative Policy and Community Relations Committee will have oversight of city government personnel policies, will work closely with the city clerk, will talk about developing new policy initiative, initiatives, evaluate existing code regulations, and, and also work on the volunteer organizations and advisory committee management, and will be responsible around communications relations with the public. So with all of that, I move this ordinance for hearing.
And I second that. Any comments from any other members of council? Seeing none, any comments from members of the public? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilman McTiernan, that was really well explained, and we talked about this at some length in the Law Committee and in the, in the overall council in our closed session as well, with a lot of input from City Administrator Rogers as well. City Administrator Rogers, you want to say anything about this plan?
I fully support it. It's, it was something that was, has been deliberated on for some time, certainly with input from and feedback from our department heads, a lot of discussion around just functionality from an operations standpoint, some of the gray area that existed between committees at times, and I think hopefully this new committee structure will clarify that, and also for future elected officials who come in and better identify the issues that are, that they're responsible for in their respective committees. So I fully support this.
Thank you, thank you so much. Seeing no other comments, why don't we move this ordinance to final consideration?
First close the hearing, President Protam.
Oh, I, let's, the hearing on this is now closed, and now we shall move this ordinance on to final consideration.
And I'll read the title.
Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Okay. An Ordinance Amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Meetings of the Common Council, Section 2-2.1, Rules of the Common Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman McTiernan.
Thank you, Council, Council President Protam. As discussed, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
Thank you, I second it. Any comments from the public on this? Suspecting, none?
Yeah, it's just...
Okay.
Just vote.
Okay, please take, is this a roll call vote or...
Yes.
Yes, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, that's very exciting. Moving on to a resolution we have from the Finance and Personnel Department. Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President Protam. We have a resolution tonight to amend the 2018 through 2023 capital plan and 2018 capital budget. That is because we have an ordinance coming up in a minute about some expenses that we need to take care of in terms of the joint meeting. So we need to do this resolution first in order to go forward with the ordinance. So that's why we're doing this a little bit out of order, and I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ogden. Are there any comments from members of council or questions about this resolution? Yes, Councilman McTiernan.
So this is for a million, I just want to get the amount that we're talking about. So it's, it's a million 175, is that the Summit's portion of this?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Excellent. Yeah, just a, a quick note on this. I know Councilman Bowman is our rep, but one of the things when we get these capital projects is important to note, because some people have asked, we service New Providence as well. Part of their outflow comes through Summit. They're not members of the joint meeting, so when we talk about these bond ordinances, it's important to note that New Providence also will pick up a percent of the principal and interest payments associated with these bonds as well.
Thank you, Councilman McTiernan. Councilman Bowman, can you, we talked a bit about this in the hallway, and I wonder, my question is, it's a lot of money, it kind of, we didn't know about it before, but in terms of this issue, this, not like we have a ton of choice in the matter, right?
Well, we, we don't have a ton of choice. Marge Gerber and I had a conversation beginning of the year. We were expecting a number during the budgeting process, January 2018. They didn't have a number at that time, so it's not an unusual, it's not an unexpected number. It's one that we usually have every, what's it, three?
Three years.
Three years, and it just came at a late time. This is not the major project that they came and presented to us in, in, was it July? I believe it was.
Yeah, in the summer.
In the summer. This is just for their annual maintenance of repairs that are done every three years or so.
Thank you. And this, from what I understand, and from what I understood from them, there's tremendous value in this of the joint, joint meeting.
It is tremendous value. We, we know, we need to keep the flow going or else we will have some, some unpleasant experiences.
I, I cannot forget their description of catastrophic failure and what that would mean.
Council Protam, I believe, Councilwoman...
Oh, forgive me, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President Protam. I just wanted to note that as Councilman Bowman referenced, the numbers were not available when we went through the capital budget process originally, otherwise this would have been included in the original capital budget. We had no idea what the number would be, what it would cover, so we had no ability to include it originally in the capital budget, and that's why we're doing this amendment. And I also wanted to note that those of you following at home, you may remember that a few months ago, we had a presentation by the joint meeting about these expenses that would be coming to us, and they are going to be funded through the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, and that is under very favorable terms to the city, 0% interest for three years. So we have some financing through, for the state for this, and in recognition that this is an expense that we're, we're taking on. So normally, of course, we try to include all the expenses in one budget process and not do these amendments, because we like to present everything at once and have a clear picture of everything at once. In this case, it was not possible.
Thank you for that thorough description. Are there any comments from the general public, of which there aren't any with us, so I'm expecting there won't be? Okay, hearing none. We have to do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we move on to the ordinance for introduction from the Finance Personnel Department. Councilwoman Little.
Council President Protam.
Oh, yes, forgive me, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Bond ordinance providing for the local unit's allocable share of capital improvement projects for the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by, and in the city of Summit, in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,175,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,175,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President Protam. From Finance Personnel, we are introducing this ordinance for introduction. This is the bond ordinance to cover the expenses that we've been discussing. Also, if you were not at the previous presentation for the joint meeting, the joint meeting is basically a shared service between a number of towns in our area to provide sewage services, so obviously crucially important. And it just wanted to note that this, these capital improvements are going to cover the replacement of waste gas burners and waste gas burner upgrades, upgrades to the sledge storage tanks, and rehabilitation of a number of structures that need repair and reconstruction. So some important things that are going to take place to make sure that the sewage system works properly, which is something that we all greatly desire to happen. So I would like to introduce this ordinance for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ogden. Any comments from, no comments, just a...
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, then. Thank you, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to resolutions in the Buildings and Grounds Department. Madam Clerk.
I will forego title reading.
Thank you.
And combat the ball to the Chair of Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Council President Protam.
I swear you're messing with me. Thank you. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President Protam. Buildings and Grounds Resolution 15929 is a resolution that authorizes the execution of an agreement, an easement agreement for 111 Bellevue Avenue, and the property owner has a retaining wall that was from previous owner, and they would like to continue to maintain this property, this wall on their property. And it's in the, the public right of way. So this is an agreement that acknowledges the encroachment of the walls onto city property and agrees to hold the city harmless from any liability associated with the encroachment. This is a standard agreement that we enter into for encroachments on city property. So I move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Do I hear any comments from council on this resolution? Seeing none, no comments from the general public. This indeed needs a vote.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Fox, please, move on to number two.
Okay, thank you, Council President Protam. Buildings and Grounds Resolution 2, number 6002, is to accept a donation of $2,500 for a bench to be dedicated to Alda and Leo Schenker. And this is a bench on the Village Green being donated by Debbie Schenker to her parents and, in memory of her parents, and it's on the, the Village Green, and we appreciate this generous donation. I move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman McTiernan. Do I have any comments from any members of council? Yes, Councilman McTiernan.
I just was reading the letter accompanying this request, and it's, it's really sweet when you talk about the couple and how they enjoyed the Village Green and such, and it's a nice way to remember their parents. So one thing, I think it is important for people to, to know that this is not, this is available to everyone. You know, there are naming things that you can do if you, if you do want to memorialize someone you love or someone who had a special connection to the town, as, as they're doing with this, which I think is really nice.
Thank you, Councilman McTiernan. I agree, I think it's really nice. I did note when they specified that they wanted the plaque to be in Hunter Green, does that match the other benches that we have in the town? Mr. Cascase?
Sure, it does. So the bench actually exists there today, we're just going to be adding the plaque to it.
The bench exists?
It does. So, and that bench was placed there during refurbishing of that northeast quadrant of Village Green.
Okay, so they're just paying for it, but it's already there?
Right, so our program allows folks to actually, our donation program allows folks to pay for the bench and the plaque, or just the plaque, it's a $2,500 fee.
Phenomenal, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Who doesn't love free money? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Councilwoman Fox, please.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds 3, Resolution 6020. This resolution authorizes the Environmental Commission to conduct the 13th Annual City Wide Earth Day Cleanup Event. So the Environmental Commission is sponsoring a day of litter cleanup and trail maintenance at various public properties, and that includes both city properties and also county properties. This has been going on for 13 years, about 200 volunteers participate each year, and in some years, they have collected more than five tons of trash and recycling. As the properties get cleaner, we've been doing this a lot of years, so we're doing less trash recycling and cleanup and more trail maintenance, cutting back invasive plants, wood chipping, and all kinds of other work, just to make our public properties more beautiful. And this is a great value to the city because we get these areas cleaned up and it's all done by volunteers, and it's also something that I think our community looks forward to every year. I guess I am kind of biased, since I was the person who started this 13 years ago, but I happen to really love this program. And so for this year, the dates are Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to noon. The rain date would be Sunday, April 28th, and the Environmental Commission has also added, asked for the option of a Sunday afternoon for additional cleanups, just to accommodate people with religious observances and other scheduling conflicts. So the Environmental Commission will confirm with city staff the specific sites once they get commitments from volunteers, but the sites being considered are the portions of Memorial Field, the Village Green, Wilson Park, Martins Brook, Morris Avenue near Overlook Hospital, and open space areas surrounding the transfer station, and Oak Ridge Avenue as well. And then the additional county sites are potentially Bryant Park, Hidden Valley Park, and Passaic River Park. And the Environmental Commission is working separately with the county to obtain permission from those sites. I in fact enthusiastically move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. I have, any, do I have any comments or questions from members of council? Yes, Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President Protam. I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilwoman Fox. I want to thank her for all her efforts in bringing this to Summit, because this is one of those programs that's been, you know, a real asset to our community, and it's a great day that brings a lot of different people from all walks of life and all ages and all areas of Summit together to work making our city better. And really, that's what, you know, city government and city volunteerism is all about, so it's been a huge success, not only in cleaning up the city, but in a great community builder. And it's been a, just an unqualified success, and thank you for everything you've done to make that happen, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you.
Yes, I second that. Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. I just have one suggestion, which is, I know we had a presentation from the City Forester about tree maintenance and specifically about cutting the suckers off the trees, and there was some training, and I thought, because I look back at that area we cleaned up... because I look back at that area we cleaned up a couple of years ago, and it's still pretty free of trash, like you said, so they're looking for more activities. I would love to somehow get the City Forester involved in this, in this Earth Day Cleanup, if that's at all possible. Thank you.
There is a separate Summit Suckers Program, which is being run through the Shade Tree Commission. Do you speak to that? I don't know what the status is.
There is indeed, yeah. Oh, please.
Through you, Council President Protem. Yes, there is a program initiative now through the Shade Tree Advisory, I believe called the Sucker Program.
Summit Suckers.
Summit Suckers. So there is a number of volunteers that are going out and removing some of the low-hanging suckers from trees. I can have an update for the next meeting on how the program is going and how many folks have participated. But this is, that's totally separate from the Earth Day.
No, I understand. I was just suggesting that of the many activities, if we had extra volunteers, that could be a very useful activity during Earth Day Cleanup. And I think it counts personally.
Sure.
Keeps our trees healthy. What's that?
Yeah, I think we would just have to coordinate with the two groups if we were to do something like that.
Yeah, if it's plausible. Thank you. Why don't we take a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to Finance Personnel, Councilwoman Little, please. More resolutions?
Yep. Thank you, Council President Protem. Finance and Personnel Resolution Number One is number 6018, to approve New Jersey DCA-required CY 2018, SFY 2019 Best Practice Inventory Program and certify occurrence of public meeting. I'm going to explain that because that was not obvious on its face to me what this resolution was about. So the explanation is that the state has a program where in order to qualify for dispersment of, or allocations of certain state aid, you need to complete a best practices inventory of your financial practices, basically. And there's a questionnaire that you fill out and an inventory that's done to make sure that you're following best practices. And then depending on your score, at the end, you get either your full state aid or you get a portion of your state aid. So I'm pleased to announce that, as with all things finance-related, that Marge Gerber and her staff have done a tremendous job in overseeing our city's finances and that the scores were extremely high on our best practices worksheet, and that we're going to be getting our full state aid. And we got, you know, a very high score. I just wanted to highlight, there were a couple of things that we answered that needed to be addressed or that could be addressed. One was that we have addressed all the audit findings, which we have, and we've talked about that in previous meetings. And then the, really the only other one was that we needed to mark the fire chief and the community service director's cars, which has been done. The other things were just answers that, you know, things that the city do, does. The passing grade is 75% on this audit, and we, Summit received a score of 90%, so well above the allowable. So I would like to move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Little and Ogden. Do I have any comments, do I see any comments from members of council? Seeing none and no comments from the general public, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Second resolution is 5994, to request permission for dedication by rider for revenues, acceptance of bequests, legacies, gifts for community programs, trust. So this resolution is basically setting up a way for the Department of Community Programs to receive grant money. As if you've been attending some of the previous council meetings and listening in, you've probably heard that we've accepted a number of grants for the, primarily for the new community center, but that we've applied for a number of grants and received them. And instead of tracking each grant separately and having different numbers to track each of those grants separately and how they're used, this allows us to set up one trust fund for the community programs in which all those monies can be placed and that they cannot be, all be tracked under the same accounting numbers. So this is a way to make it easier for the Director of Community Programs to track those grants, and I would ask that this resolution be approved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from council members about this? Yes, Councilwoman McTiernan?
Just a question. Is this trust going to be for grants having just to do with the capital improvements at the community center, or is it also going to be for, you know, general revenue to, or for operating expenses, I guess, is another way?
Well, I'm thrilled to hear it because I have about 20 different accounts rumbling around that I'm glad that there'll be one depository. I wasn't aware of that. But this would be for all the grants related to the department's projects or programs. So we do get grants for programs such as senior education, Junior League for Feeding Program through the department. So I'm assuming, Marge, there are all the, all the grants besides just the capital for the community center. So it's community programs as opposed to just community center.
Okay, so, but if we were to, so I know we've gotten some grants to help fund the community center.
Yes.
If we were to get some more, like, I don't know, in the future, would they go into this account as well?
That's, that's what our intentions are.
Just community center grants.
Or any capital one?
Just for the one.
Okay, it's new to me. So I'm as happy and surprised to hear that it's even on the agenda tonight. So, community center.
Yeah, my one suggestion would be, I think if we were to do this, which I think is a great idea, because, you know, I know having to track all these things and do all the line items is difficult bookkeeping. I would just suggest maybe having a separate one for capital, for capital improvements versus operating.
Capital has to go through capital.
Yeah, it all stays separate.
So capital would never go in?
It would never be, no, it would never go into operating.
All right, then, okay.
We, we just received one at the last council meeting for the Bocchi Park.
Yeah.
And we're waiting to hear some from BPU for utilities for the.
Fantastic. Any other comments from members of council or from members of the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President Protem. The final finance resolution for tonight is 6032, and that is to extend injury leave with pay for a Department of Public Works employee, and that is pending, that is pursuant to the closed session discussion that we had earlier tonight. And I move that resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, well, we discussed this at the closed session. Any comments from council about this, about this resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to General Services. Councilman Bowman.
No.
Councilwoman Ogden. Forgive me. I had to leave on the brain. I apologize, Councilwoman Ogden.
That's all right. Yes, thank you, Council President Protem. This is Resolution 5859, Resolution to Authorize Professional Services Agreement in the Excess of $17,500 and in the Amount of $35,600. This agreement basically is an agreement with Sage Elder Care in providing professional services, i.e. social worker, RN, what have you, in their contracts and benefits, to provide all the amazing things that Sage does for our seniors in the City of Summit as well as surrounding areas. And so I wholeheartedly support this resolution and move it at this time.
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ogden. Are there any comments from members of council or from the general public? I would just say, yes, they do, there is so many amazing things listed in here, and it seems like really excellent value for the money. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution from the Law Committee, Councilman McTiernan.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Yeah, so this resolution amends a resolution we just did last month, so that's a little unusual. But when we, we approved the expansion of the current liquor license at the Summit House to allow them to sell their liquor license to be enforced in the new restaurant portion that they're opening up, which was on the Rosalita's site off of Maple. So Summit House is expanding, and that last resolution allowed them to serve alcohol off their current liquor license in their new expanded restaurant. What was an oversight was, however, they also asked to be able to sell alcohol in a cafe area that will stretch down on the side of Maple Street. So there'll be some tables along the, on the sidewalk there, abutting the building, going from sort of the corner down to where Rosalita's currently is. It's one table wide. This was, this plan and has been approved as a, as a meeting code, so there's enough room to maneuver on the sidewalk. There are some rules and guidelines around, you know, how much sidewalk space is needed for handicap accessibility, et cetera. So all that's been okayed. But the oversight was that, that cafe area that would only be allowed through the cafe season, which in Summit we've defined as March 1st through November 30th. They'd be allowed to also sell alcohol at those outdoor tables. So with that, I move this resolution.
Thank you. I second the resolution. Any comments from members of council or from the general public? It looks like 46 spots to have outdoor drinking. So that's fantastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, now on to Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council Protem, President, Protem Gould. Resolution, Works Resolution Number One is, Resolution 5961, is to Resolution Rejecting Bids and to Reauthorize Advertising of the Springfield Avenue Project in front of City Hall. We received six bids, and they all exceeded our projected amount, projected and approved amount. So therefore, we, we have to put it out for bid again. This project was going to go from Springfield, or Springfield Avenue from Morris down to the bridge out here. Engineering will review the project and make the necessary changes to bring in line with our budget. We expect to advertise and receive the bids in the first quarter of 2019. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Bowman, any comments from members of council? I have one question. This is, so do we feel like we just were asking for too much?
That's basically it. We, Paul, do you want to answer it a little bit more? Give more detail?
Sure. Through you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Cascade.
We did, we did spec the project as a mill pave, some handicap accessible area work, curbing work, sidewalk improvement work, and also lighting. And it came in about $150,000 higher than we expected. So we have to actually go back to the drawing board and look at what we want to eliminate off of the project to get it to where we're comfortable at about $200,000. So we received $100,000 in grant money for this project, and then our capital budget, we budgeted about $100,000.
Okay.
So we're going to have to just downsize the project to get it where we need to get it to, because we want to take advantage of the grant money.
Thank you. Seems, seems very clear. Any other comment? Yes?
I want to add one comment. I hope we can keep those spots that we talked about adding out front, so for the police and.
Right, right. So that included also some parking out front to accommodate some of the police vehicles.
Right. I think that would be an excellent use of that space. We discussed it in the Safety Committee.
That'll be something that we'll, we'll keep in the project. We'll just have to look at where we're going to trim down other areas of the project. And as Councilman Bowman mentioned, that is from Morris Avenue to the bridge right out, to the right of the parking lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cascade. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, number two, Councilman?
Okay, Resolution Number Two for Works is 5963, and that is to award a bid for the Pyong Grove Avenue Project, which is going from Springfield to Blackburn. We also received six bids on this one on October 23rd for the project, and the low qualified bidder was Sofeli and Sons, a contractor Summit has done several projects with over the years. They're out of Nutley, New Jersey for the amount of $168,380. The project will include infrastructure, milling, sidewalk connections, and the like. There are no plans for any bridge work to be done, because that's going to be covering that. I move we accept this project.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Any comments from members of council or questions or from the general public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please, Councilman Bowman?
Continuing on, awarding another bid. It's Works Number Three is ID 6019, and that is to award a bid for a 2019 through 2020 onsite vegetative waste grinding. The winner is Jersey Mulch Products out of Toaco, New Jersey. They submitted a full-day bid price of $4,170 and a half-day bid of $2,085. This resolution is for an annual amount, not to exceed $50,000. So what are we talking about here? We got a bunch of trees, we got branches out there, we grind it up, and we make the mulch available to our citizens, something that our citizens take advantage of during the spring, fall, and the like. We also have been known, if they don't take it all, to offer it to local businesses, and we use it ourselves, the city does. So basically, this is a project that many in Summit use. And it's, it's, it's one of the fine uses that the transfer station takes advantage of. We're unique in that, in that opportunity. Long story short, I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Any questions from, yes, Councilman McTiernan?
Just, I, for some reason, I don't recollect us doing this before. And is this, is this a new project? And if it is, that, like, why are we doing it now? And if not?
Never brought forth to council.
So I'm not going completely senile then?
No, yeah. And what we did was, we do typically haul the vegetative waste away. But we've been looking at some other options now, like grinding, where it costs, it's a similar cost, but we're able to take the end product and give it back to our residents versus bring it into a location, have it grinded, and then we don't have the opportunity to have the material. So we'll continue to use both services if we need. But this is something that we're looking to expand on going forward.
So this will be done at the transfer station, and we'll have a pile of wood chips and mulch and all sorts of different?
Right. So you'll have double ground mulch, which typically you receive from your landscape contractor.
Right, at a very expensive rate.
Right.
Last year, we rented one of these, right? It was a tub grinder?
These are tub grinders, right. So, but we didn't rent it. We actually contracted the services.
We did. And well, we had a different company last year?
We did, yep. And we had Reed Industries.
So this is just a better bid?
Right. So last year, we didn't go out to bid.
Right.
It was under the bid threshold. We went through a co-op, Somerset County Co-op, who Reed was the contracted service contractor. But we thought we can get better pricing maybe than the co-ops, and we went out to bid, and we're happy with the way the bids came in.
And it's better pricing?
Yep, yes.
Fantastic. That mulch was fantastic last year, and we had so many trees that came down. I fill up the minivan with mulch personally. So fantastic. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Cascades. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, Works, please continue.
Continuing on. Works Number Four is Resolution 6021, is to authorize the acquisition of a 2018 Bobcat Tool Cat tractor in the amount of $58,904.70, and we're buying it through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Co-op. Basically, what we got is, we're getting a 19, or we're replacing a 1997 tractor that is in dire need of being replaced. It's. It's, it's, uh, it's served its time. Uh, but with this new tractor, we're gonna be able to do a lot more. It's, uh, it, this tractor will provide year-round service for the recreation parks, uh, shade tree, in addition to works. Uh, it will have a front-end loader that will, uh, make, removing the snow from the roofs of the parking garages much more, uh, safe, efficient, and quick, uh, which is always a good thing. Um, and basically, it will also allow us to, uh, move around town grabbing tree branches, plus it has a front-end loader that, uh, the guys are gonna be using. Uh, it's gonna be safer for them, because the old tractor was, uh, a basic tractor, and this one will have a char, cable and, or, enclosed experience, and it'll be much more safe for our, our city employees. Uh, I move we accept this res, uh, resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, members of council? I, I have a question that I saw, was this one that we were gonna put on the agenda before?
We, we did. Uh, we, uh, we pulled some of the bells and whistles. We found out that we could use existing equipment, so that we don't have to go out and buy, uh, new accessories.
Yeah, I thought so. Very, so very frugal, so a lot, a lot, um, more economical. And, and that Ford F-1520 that we're replacing, that, that would cost twenty or thirty thousand dollars today? Something similar to that?
I, I would assume that it would be more costly. It'd probably avail fifty thousand dollars to replace something like that. But the unit that we're proposing is very versatile, with, um, you know, the opportunity for a number of attachments. So, um, this, this unit will come in very handy, uh, during storm cleanups. I don't know if, you know, during the storms that we had, if you were able to experience and see Public Works going around with the small machine with the grapple and loading the trucks. This machine would do the same. So we do have a Bobcat currently, um, and we wanted to replace this Ford, which is not versatile, you can only use it for a couple of functions. This I'll be able to use throughout the four seasons versus the Ford, the old unit, which was only used in the winter and part of the summer to do some landscape work.
Right.
Um, this unit, though, will, um, be used during snow. We have a snow blower attachment for our other one. Eventually, I'd like to get a grapple attachment for this and a snow blower to, um, really complete, um, the functions of what this should really be doing.
Hmm. And how long, would this last? For ten years, or?
I, you know, hoping to get fifteen to seventeen years out of it.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I was gonna say, one other thing, I did do a comparison of the Ford, and this one has much higher towing capabilities. I believe the Ford has like a two-ton, and this has a four-ton towing capability, so.
I think that makes a lot of sense with the size of trees we've been having fall down every winter. So, wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please continue.
All right. Uh, author, uh, Works number five is to authorize change order number one, uh, final for Plymouth Road improvement in the amount of a reduction of twenty-two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Some good news after the last two spendings. Um, so basically, what we did is Fisher Contracting out of Scotch Plains came in, under budget by twenty-two thousand dol, four hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Majority of the savings came from not needing to use as much asphalt as was originally projected, um, saving close to eighteen thousand dollars out of that, uh, capital order. Uh, the balance of the project adjustments were in concrete, curbing, as well as our infrastructure hookups. So the good news is, came in under budget. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank the Fisher team, and the Plymouth project came out really nice. I mean, will we accept this resolution?
Second.
Uh, any comments from council? It's phenomenal news, and thank them for coming in on our budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? How there could be anyone opposed? I don't know. Uh, please continue.
Okay, can we bundle these last two guys?
Please do.
Yes, let's do that. Okay, so we have two, uh, Works, uh, numbers six and seven, which is IDs fifty-nine oh eight and six thousand and four. Uh, we have, we're gonna be installing some signal lights on, or upgrading signal lights on River Road. First off, there's some great news for those people that drive Passaic. We're gonna have a signal light there at the gas station. Uh, that has been a, a snaggletooth of a intersection, so we'll have a signal light there, and the agreement for that is with the developer of the, the gas station, and he will be contributing, it's a Union County road, so Union County agreed for the signal light to be put in. Uh, we agree that we will maintain it, and, uh, all the enterprise prizes is donating or contributing ten thousand dollars to the maintenance, long-term maintenance of that signal light. Now, we're also at the end of Morris Avenue, where Sunrise Living is putting in their facility. Um, we are having to, to put a timing into that, so that people can get in and out of the Sunrise Living, uh, facility, and similar is, uh, since the light's already been there, um, we have an agreement with the Sunrise, um, developer, or the Sunrise Inc., and they will be contributing five thousand dollars for the maintenance. So similar, uh, deals, just that Sunrise is getting a five thousand dollar discount, I guess, uh, for not having put in the full deal. I move we accept these resolutions.
Second.
Wonderful. Any comments from, yes, Councilman McTiernan?
Yeah, um, these will be much needed. I mean, anyone who's driven down on River Road at, at the bottom of Morris knows that, um, you know, we need these yesterday. There's a lot going on down there. So I, I think both of them, it, it's great that this is happening, and it's also really nice that we're getting, uh, you know, the, this private development to actually help offset the cost, because it, it is an important part of allowing development there, is to maintain public safety. So, uh, it's great that they're kicking in for that. I also, though, when the freeholders were here last week, or the week before, um, I thanked them, uh, for the ability for the, at the county level, that we were able to work with them much more closely and get these types of things done much more quickly. Uh, if anyone can remember how long it took to get the light at Springfield and brought in, it took years, literally years. So the, the county deserves a lot of credit, uh, and I think working with our own Public Works Department, there's clearly a, a much better working relationship now, where we can get projects like this, uh, done very, very quickly, and, and that's a credit to the county, as well as the hard work of our Public Works Department. Um, and then finally, as a side, it, it's, it is great to see, uh, development in that part of town. You know, a lot of times, we, we just talked about it today, we, we seem very fixated on the downtown, and I know we've had this conversation with our city administrator, there is a lot going on in Summit, and if, uh, and certainly River Road is one of those places where there's a lot of private development that's happening, the expansion of the gas station with that convenience store being one, the, the new assisted living, but all along that area, thriving businesses, uh, going on there, uh, as well as what we're seeing down, um, in East Summit, uh, at, uh, at Ashwood as well. Um, so it, it, it's good to see that there's a lot of things happening, just even outside of our, our downtown area, and this is a great example of that.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's great news for all of us, and I live in that, uh, part of town near River Road and Morris, and delighted that, uh, they're doing that. And there, uh, just in terms of that, the timing of it, we have the other light going in, right? That, that's gonna.
Chatham Road.
In Chatham Road. Uh, I just want to make sure we don't get in a scenario where we get the construction completed and the light hasn't gone in at Chatham Road, 'cause I fear that the people on, uh, Greenfield will never be able to get out of their, their street.
Do we have a timer, you know, when that will be?
Through you, Council President Protam.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have the, the, um, schedule yet for that installation, but that'll, that, that installation will be coming up shortly. I don't think it's gonna be much after the phase on Morris and, and River Road.
Okay.
And they'll make sure that they'll do an analysis, they'll make sure they time them in a way, because they're a short distance to one another, and that the traffic continues to move, especially on River Road. But also allow folks to exit out of Chatham Road, Greenfield Avenue, and those areas that were, you know, that were subject to that type of congestion and.
Right. Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that you're gonna, um, that they're going to set up the timing properly, because while it's not our major concern, um, I've heard from residents in Chatham, who just swing down Passaic and then head around down River, over to, um, not Passaic, they come over from Chatham on Shunpike, and then come right down River, sort of heading towards the mall, so they don't worry about turning onto, uh, River Road from either Passaic or Greenfield or Morris.
Right.
Um, and they're, they have raised the concern of, oh, what are, what's three traffic lights gonna mean to us? And I said, County Road? No.
Yeah, so.
But I did say that, you know, I was sure, and so I'm glad to hear, I'm sure that they will be timed properly.
They will. And that was part of the warrant analysis for the traffic signal at Chatham Road.
Right.
Um, because they were concerned about them being that close, um, in proximity, but the warrant analysis, um, definitely showed that, you know, a signal was needed, and they can, and they can time it up, so there isn't. And, and in the event that, um, as you know, we get some complaints, we will address them. Um, if there needs to be retimed, we'll retime them.
Yeah. I, I think all of this is gonna make a huge difference, and then that's gonna alleviate the, uh, people who never, ever yield coming off of, uh, coming off of Passaic on a River Road, right? It's very clear yield sign, they never, ever yield.
Well, and also our DPDW guys must have a heck of a time trying to make a left off Chatham, Chatham Road onto River Road.
They do.
It's crazy.
It is. And, um, there were times, uh, during storms, we would actually go out our street into Chatham and come around from one twenty-four onto River Road, because we would be bottlenecked there, you couldn't get out. This will be a great improvement.
This will be wonderful. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Can I ask a quick question while Paul is still there? Thank you. Um, I worry with the, excuse me, with the new Sunrise going in and folks visiting there, and then wanting to walk up to the, you know, like Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, that's such a dangerous intersection. Are we gonna have clear walkways and lights that, that the pedestrians to cross and?
So, yeah, so I think, um, there's a crosswalk that's gonna go from the north side of River to the south side, that will connect you to the, then the sidewalk that runs alongside of that Clermont, where Clermont property, um, where the Dunkin' Donuts is. So there'll, there'll be a crosswalk in that area there to get you over to the sidewalk area.
Okay. I worry that they may take a little time to get across the street and have, need a light to help them.
Right. And there's a bus stop as well between, so we do get, um, pedestrians that do cross from Morris Avenue to across River Road.
Right.
To use that bus stop on River Road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And those are gonna be, you know, senior citizens, right? Crossing that, too, so it's gotta be extra long. For, yes, Councilman Fox?
Thank you, Council President Protam. I had a question for Paul as well.
Sure.
Is there any effort to put a sidewalk, since there is that bus stop there, and that there is not a sidewalk on the side of where Sunrise is? But as long as we're talking about all this, this intersection, do you know?
So where the bus stop currently is, there is a sidewalk. So that's the bus shelter that, um, is only about two hundred feet from Chatham Road. So there's a bus shelter there with a small sidewalk area there. There are no, uh, there was nothing, um, that was intended in this project to add any sidewalks on that side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Comments, new business?
Oh.
Uh, I move right on to adjournment. Forgive me. Councilmember comments her new business? Anyone? Yes, Councilman McTiernan?
Yes, since I interrupted you. I had to say this, 'cause it's a, it's a unabashed plug for the high school fall drama play. Um, it's Peter and the Starcatchers. It's gonna be a great performance. It's gonna be next, uh, next Thursday, Friday, Saturday, November fifteenth to seventeenth. It's, uh, comedy, it kind of predates the Peter Pan story, uh, but all your favorite characters will be in it, uh, and I would highly recommend you getting some tickets and, and going to see that. And then finally, the other thing, I would just say, um, this coming Monday is Veterans' Day, so November eleventh. This is the hundredth anniversary of Armistice Day, which Veterans' Day is based off of. So this is, uh, Armistice Day, for those who don't know, was set, it was the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, and that ended, officially ended the fighting[1737.88]